At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of April 7, 2025. For viewers watching at home, some members of the public may be participating via video conference or teleconference. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Bus is absent. Commissioner Lanson?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Vice Chair Tyler Kettlehut?
Here.
Chair Ferris?
Here. Tonight, we have with us Deputy Community Development Director Fabiola Zelaya Meliker. Are there any written comments, announcements, continuances at this time?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. Now's the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the Commission regarding any city planning matter that is not on the evening's agenda. Should the Commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to for staff scheduling on a future agenda. Anyone would like to speak under Public Comments must fill out a speaker card in chambers or click Request to Speak on the Agenda to receive instructions before Public Comments portion of the Agenda is called. Speakers' remarks should be addressed to the Commission as a whole, not to any individual commissioner or staff member, unless otherwise provided by the Commission. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Screen will show you the remaining time you have. Do we have any public comments?
No, we have none.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the Consent Calendar with the minutes of March 17, 2025, Planning Commission Reorganization Meeting. Consent Calendar will be approved in one motion unless Commissioner wishes to pull an item for discussion or in separate motions. Any of our fellow Commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve the Consent Calendar? Commissioner Lanson?
I would move to approve the Consent Calendar.
Great. May we have a vote?
Commissioner Lanson?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Abstain.
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero. Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut abstaining, Commissioner Bus absent.
Thank you. No public hearings this evening. We will go to 8A. Capital Improvement Program Consistency. Tonight, we have a department report on the conformity determination of the City Thousand Oaks Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2025-2026 and 2026-2027 with the Thousand Oaks General Plan. Presenting on behalf of staff is Senior Planner Scott Colwitz.
All right. Well, good evening, Chair Ferris, members of the Planning Commission, members of the public. Tonight, we are here to report on the consistency of the proposed Capital Improvement Program and the 2045 General Plan. I'm joined by some non-planning faces up here tonight. I've got colleagues from both the Public Works team as well as the Finance Team with us tonight. And as we go through this, if you have any questions, we're all here for you. So diving right on into things, the Capital Improvement Program describes planned Public Works projects throughout the city over the short term, defined as two years, as well as the longer term, defined as three years. The CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, I'll use those terms interchangeably tonight, provides a working blueprint for sustaining and improving the community's infrastructure. It coordinates strategic planning, financial capacity, and physical development. The proposed Capital Improvement Program is organized into 11 different categories. And the CIP for the first two fiscal years includes 147 projects totaling approximately $160 million worth of improvements. A total of 271 projects are planned over the next five years totaling approximately $538 million. So Government Code Sections 65-103C and 65-401 require the Planning Commission to report on the consistency of the CIP projects with our adopted general plan. Government Code Section 65-402 requires that real property acquisition or disposition, street vacationing or abandonment, public buildings or structure construction be consistent with the general plan as to location, purpose, and extent. And those things collectively are all embodied in the CIP. So the Planning Commission's purpose and action tonight on this matter is to be advisory to the City Council and to provide a recommendation on this matter, which will be forwarded to the City Council as part of their consideration at the Capital Improvement Program Budget Study Session, which is scheduled for tomorrow night, April 8, and eventually for the CIP adoption on June 10, 2025. So the CIP itself has detailed project sheets that are provided for each and every one of the CIP projects. The project detail sheets include a project description, a justification for why the project is needed, and consistency with the city's general plan element. CIP projects may be consistent with more than one goal or policy in the general plan, but only one needs to be identified for each project. To identify consistency, the Planning Commission Staff Report contains a specific general plan goal, the goal language, as well as a policy citation, which corresponds to the project detail sheet element. The City's Capital Improvement Program Dashboard is available online, and it highlights the location of active CIP projects in real time. The map shows the location and status of projects in the design stage, the construction stage, and projects which have been recently completed. Additionally, if you click on any of the little icons, a project description as well as a staff contact is provided for each of the projects. So diving into each of the sections here. The facilities improvement projects will occur at the Civic Arts Plaza, where we are tonight, the Teen and Global Adult Centers, Transportation Center, the Los Robles Greens Golf Course, and the Municipal Service Center, which all require periodic rehabilitation and upgrades. All the projects that were reviewed were found to be consistent with the community facilities and service element, the land use element, mobility element, and the safety elements. Our housing projects provide support to a variety of projects, including but not limited to permanent supportive housing, the navigation center, contributions to the land trust, and affordable housing. The proposed, the single proposed project was found to be consistent with the land use element. The landscape and streetscape projects are designed to provide improvements and enhance the beauty of the public right of way. Landscaping removal and replacement is water conservation-minded, and some of the projects are coordinated with the Canayo Recreation and Parks District. Proposed projects were found to be consistent with the conservation, community facilities and services, governance, and land use elements. The library projects include battery and energy storage installations and electric vehicle charging station installations, and the proposed projects were found to be consistent with the safety element. Our open space projects include acquisition of land as they become available, construction and renovation of trails, drainage improvements, habitat restoration, non-native plant management, fencing, and signage improvements. And these programs were found to be consistent with the parks and open space element. Stormwater projects include the study of local flooding solutions and implementation of studies to ensure the adequate collection and management of stormwater runoff. Projects include improvements to pipes, inlets, channels, and grates, diversion structures to remove pollutants from the watershed, and slope stabilization. Proposed projects were found to be consistent with the conservation and safety elements. Please note that one of you informed us with your eagle eyes that the Staff Report correctly identified the South Beach Royal Canayo Drainage Improvement Project, Project 615670, is consistent with Goal S4 and Policy 4.5 of the general plan. However, the CIP book identified a consistency with the mobility element. For the City Council's June 10 meeting, the CIP book will be updated to include the proper reference to the safety element. The street projects include pavement management and program updates, street construction, widening, rehabilitation, median and turn lane modifications, bike lane construction, signal installation, barrier and guardrail installation, curb ramps, gutter, sidewalk, and crosswalk, construction and rehabilitation. These proposed projects were found to be consistent with the community facilities and service element, land use element, as well as the mobility element. Our transportation and traffic projects include modifications to the transportation center and park and ride facilities, battery energy storage and electric vehicle charging station installations, bus shelter enhancements, purchase of electric dial-a-ride vans and electric buses, traffic signal infrastructure upgrades, freeway interchange improvements, bridge rehabilitation, street restriping, improvements to our bus infrastructure, and various street pedestrian bicycle path enhancements and safety features, not to mention sound walls, geographic information system, data updates, and implementation of the Active Transportation Plan. So there's a lot in this one. Proposed projects were found to be consistent with the community facilities and service element, the land use element, mobility element, noise element, and safety element. Our undergrounding projects include undergrounding of overhead power and communication facilities. And all of these proposed projects were found to be consistent with our community facilities and service element. Our wastewater projects include maintenance improvements to the wastewater systems, collection, treatment, reclamation, and disposal components, construction of our bio solids conveying system, stormwater diversion, slope stabilization, access roads, solar system purchases, improvements of the Hill Canyon Treatment Master Plan, and implementing the Wastewater Collections Master Plan. And these proposed projects were found to be consistent with both the community facilities and service element and the safety element. Our water projects ensure a viable and dependable water storage and distribution system. And these projects include the repair and replacement and upgrade of existing pipes and mains, facilities, pump stations, storage reservoirs, the emergency water interconnect, and access roads. In addition, battery energy storage, backup generator installations, water security system improvements, development of the groundwater utilization project, water and system hydraulic bottle upgrades, and the citywide water mainline replacement study and implementation. And these proposed projects were found to be consistent with the community facilities and service element and safety elements. Oops. I didn't give you the real-time animation, so my apologies for that. In terms of environmental review, staff has determined that the Capital Improvement Program General Plan Consistency Determination Report is not a project subject to review under the California Environmental Quality Act, and it is therefore exempt from environmental review. This is because the Capital Improvement Project is a government funding document that does not commit to any specific project. However, as required by SEQA, environmental review will be conducted prior to the construction of individual projects that are identified with the capital improvement or within the Capital Improvement Project program if they move forward. So our recommendation tonight to the Planning Commission is that you first and foremost find that the consistency determination of the Capital Improvement Program with the general plan is not a project under SEQA, and find the proposed Capital Improvement Program to be consistent with the 2045 general plan per the resolution attached to the Staff Report. And that concludes our presentation tonight. Staff is available if you have any questions for us.
Fantastic. Thank you for that report. Are there any questions or comments of staff from Commissioners? Commissioner McMahon?
I just have one comment and one question. The comment was, I'm really pleased to see you're doing the Class 1 bike lanes and you're restriping and doing all that stuff to make it safer for cyclists. I love that. And the second was just a curiosity question. You're doing upgrades to this share forum here and fixing things that are out of date and all that stuff. And I know in the future, City Hall is going to get a whole, whole new look and a whole new... and a whole new, we're changing it, especially the exterior. Will these, will these be enough for the new changes when City Hall is redone? Or is this just kind of interim and nothing else will?
Yeah, good evening. Nader Hidari, Deputy Public Works Director. The improvements that are being proposed for the existing facility here, yeah, we're trying to limit things so that we're not doing anything that's going to have to be replaced or redone and revised. That overall downtown project redevelopment is still in the works and in the preliminary design stages, so things are still fluid and moving. It's anticipated that this theater and the other theater will, the main theater will remain, but many of the other components will be reconfigured. So, but even with that, in order to keep the building operating successfully for the next five or so years, or however long that might take, we do need to make some improvements.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Okay. I do have just a few questions. Let me, I had already provided these, so I'm just, I just wanted to kind of reiterate these during the hearing and get your sense of it for myself, the commissioners, and the public. So one was on South Branch Arroyo Conejo Drainage Improvement CI 5807. So it indicates that it's consistent with the general plan based on the policy of partnering with Ventura County Watershed Protection District to complete drainage improvements to enable parcels to be removed from the 100-year flood plain. And I wanted to just get an understanding to the extent we're partnering with the Watershed Protection District for this particular project.
Sure. So the city does partner with outside agencies, and specifically for this one, the city partners with Ventura County Watershed Protection Agency and the County of Ventura to evaluate the existing stormwater system. And for this project, it's within the Newberry Park area, both in the city and the county unincorporated areas. The city leads the study to evaluate the floodplain limits as depicted on FEMA's Flood Insurance Rating Map, the FER maps, and potential improvements to remove flood insurance requirements for as many residents as possible. The improvements identified within the Thousand Oaks municipal boundaries will be carried out by Thousand Oaks, and improvements identified within Ventura County unincorporated areas would be carried out by the county.
All right. Thank you. Let me see, one, one more, or actually I have two more. One is on the Oakwood Drive improvements. Can you just describe a little bit more about where that is, how that relates to the overall downtown project?
Sure. So Oakwood Drive is one of our hidden streets, if you will. It's not one that many people know about. It's actually pretty much to the west of the parking structure here for City Hall, on the backside essentially of the T.O. Boulevard properties on the south of T.O. Boulevard. And that project will generally include street improvements to Oakwood Drive, including curb, gutter, sidewalks, drainage improvements, and overall roadway widening. The project may include utility undergrounding, and it may include some level of street lighting. As it relates to the downtown project, both are still under review. It's, they're very much in the early design phases right now, so we don't specifically know all the improvements that are going to happen with those. But as those projects both move forward and into the design phase, those reviews will be coordinated with one another.
Okay, thank you. My last one was one, it touches on about three different projects, and I just wanted to get and understand how it relates to the general plan. I think I understand, but it'd be good to just know for more detail. There's the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Center Line Alignment, Hillcrest Drive Survey Monuments, and the Geographic Information System Based Benchmark Circuit Update. These projects are identified to be consistent with the Goal LU1, Policy 18. And if you can describe a little bit more detail how those relate to be consistent with the entitlement process, which is to seek to be a business-friendly city by streamlining the city's entitlement process to encourage new development renovations for existing buildings for residential and non-residential uses.
Chair Ferris, absolutely. Thank you for this question. This is one of those unusual ones in the, in the CIP because it's not the same sort of grandiose public improvement that you would think. So what the monuments are essentially is, these are survey markers throughout this entire city. And as construction happens or life happens, sometimes those markers get misplaced, removed, or damaged during construction and just daily activities in our streets. So with those markers maybe being missing, this project basically looks to replace them as we move forward. And the absence of monuments can affect future projects by increasing costs, hardships, and delayed timing relative to surveying work that needs to happen. And this is especially important throughout Thousand Oaks Boulevard mixed-use area, the corridor here, as we're looking at really redeveloping it. It exists citywide, but really in this corridor. So these projects essentially will set and confirm the survey or markets in the public, sorry, monuments in the public right-of-way, which can be allowed for both private and public investment into the community specifically to identify things like property boundaries, easement locations, where structures may exist, where utilities may exist, topography perhaps, if we have protected trees, identifying where those exist on plan form. And really, all of those things are pretty fundamental to our discussion of how to develop or redevelop properties throughout the city. So by moving forward with this work, we're essentially putting the, the work upfront, if you will, before the redevelopment process starts to streamline things on the back end as redevelopment does come before us.
And generally, this, these investments that the city makes, makes it better for public and private projects to be able to foster and follow through with the plans that have come before the city in the past, right?
Yes, 100%.
Okay. Just want to ask if there's any other questions from commissioners? I'll then ask, do we have any public speakers?
No, none.
Okay, I will then ask, do the commissioners have any other, any other questions before we have a discussion and/or a vote? Does anyone want to offer any discussion or vote?
Again, I just want to say thank you for the report. A lot of information. But I would go ahead and make the motion to find that the action is not a project under the defined, under the California Environmental Quality Act and Adopt a Resolution reporting the proposed capital improvement program for fiscal years 2025 to 2026 and 2026 to 2027 to be consistent with the Thousand Oaks general plan and that this finding be conveyed to the City Council.
Great. Any comments on the motion? If not, could we have a vote?
Commissioner Lanson?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0. Commissioner Bus absent.
Fantastic. Again, thank you very much for the report and review of the, of the plan. Now's the time for commission comments and/or any AB 1234 reports. Are there any comments from my fellow commissioners? Seeing none, Ms. Zalaya Meliker, are there any follow-up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
Thank you, Chair. On April 8, the City Council will review Consent Calendar Item Regarding a SEQA Consultant Contract for the Conejo Summit Project. On April 29, a public hearing will be held to discuss community development block grant programs, CBDG, and U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development documents, including the Draft 2025-2029 Ventura County Regional Consolidated Plan, the Draft 2025 to 2026 Annual Action Plan, the Draft 2025 Ventura County Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, and Draft Citizen Participation Plan. Additionally, there will be two Consent Calendar Items, one appointment of a Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy member, and transfer of city-owned open space property to COSCA for long-term ownership and management of ownership, and management of Assessor Parcel Number 6630093225, related to upcoming Planning Commission schedule. For April 28, we will have a department report that will be presented on the general plan and housing element annual progress report. And there will be a hearing for 50 industrial buildings proposed at the intersection of Conejo Drive, Rancher Conejo Boulevard on May 19. And that is all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank the Commission. Thank the public. We'll now adjourn to the next meeting, April 28, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. Thanks, everyone.